I'm taller. I didn't know. This year. I was gonna say. It's like.
Easy now, people, easy.
Clean cut for today and we'll see what happens by the 30th.
Okay. It's a couple of minutes after six o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get started. We will call the Johnston City Council Work Session number 21-21 to order. Cindy Roco, please.
Councilwoman Evans.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Ready?
Here.
Burkhardt?
Here.
Coe.
We have a couple of items on our agenda this evening and we also have some guests coming in at about 6:45 who would like to spend some time with us introducing themselves, sharing. It's part of the.
Diwali?
It's they're here for the Diwali resolution and so they want to spend some time with us out in the hallway. I think they have some treats for us. So if we can finish up our business for the work session by about 6:45, that would work well to spend some time with them. So with that, let's move on to the discussion items. The first is 3A, Continued Discussion of the 2023 or 2223 through 2627 Capital Improvement Plan. Matt?
Good evening. I I'll try and be brief. We've got a lot to cover here with the roads as well as sanitary sewer and water. With that, I'll just kind of jump in right away. These have been previously discussed at two Public Works Ad Hoc Committee meetings. We've gone through this. We've moved a couple of things around and we'll talk about that as I kind of go through here. But first up on the list, we have the ICAP project on Merle Hay Road. And I know that the description on the projects my department says Lithia to 70th Avenue. That's actually a misprint on my part. The description would actually be from Lithia or the interstate to 62nd Avenue. This project would be a collaboration between the DOT, the Des Moines Area MPO, and the city of Johnston. This project would allow us to upgrade our traffic signals on Merle Hay Road. It would also include new controllers, yellow flashing arrows, and a GPS clock which would be able to let our signals communicate with Des Moines and the interstate, which has always been kind of an outstanding issue there. This would overall overall traffic flow was a top concern for the residents that was identified in our community survey. This project would help accomplish improving this goal on Merle Hay corridor. If the project is funded by the ICAP grant, it would be a split between the Iowa DOT and the city of Johnston. Eighty percent would come to the from the DOT and 20% would be funded by the city. The current number that you see in the CIP is the full amount for the project. And if we were given the grant, we would reduce that in our CIP. The next one on the list is sidewalks. Our sidewalks program is an ongoing program which was previously funded portions of the Merle Hay Road Trail, sidewalk connections along Northwest 62nd Avenue to the neighborhoods to the east from Lawson down to Beaver Drive. With this, the current program is replacing ramps within the Green Meadows neighborhood. And then we're going to roll right into the full city program where residents are notified to repair deficiencies within their sidewalks and either be able to fix those on their own or opt into the city's contract and have those repairs made by the city's contractor. So staff and folks did have a second public information meeting and about the ramp project, it was received very well. So we'll be moving forward with that as well. The the next project is East of Merle Hay and this would be a continuation of north of 62nd. I believe we've got a map for this. There's several segments. This would be a continuation of the projects that you saw to the south with upgraded water mains. We would be installing sanitary sewer in the area that's mainly served by septic systems. Also, this would be improved storm sewer and roads as well. And we staff has received a few inquiries over the past couple of months on the timing of the projects. This was previously scheduled to begin in 2027. It has been recommended by the Public Works Ad Hoc Committee that we move those projects up a year. And with that, with the three-year construction schedule, year one being designed, two being right away acquisition, and year three being construction, this would actually allow us to begin public meetings in 2022. Then we got 62nd Avenue roadway between 54th and Beaver Drive where we really left off with our intersection project just to the south of us here. This project is slated to be moved out to future years. We've got a couple of those East of Merle Hay projects that we really need to construct for 63rd Avenue, 64th Avenue, so that we can use 62nd as circulation. Once those are completed, we could fit that back into our CIP, but we would really just shift it out a couple of years for the time being. This section would also likely be a three-lane urban segment like we have out here to the south. Just be a continuation down to Beaver Drive. Then we've got next on the list is Northwest 107th Avenue. This would run from Northwest 70th up to 78th Avenue. This section of the road is currently slated for an asphalt overlay to provide additional life to the road that's out there. This would be a joint project with Grimes at a 50/50 cost share between the two cities. There is currently a bike trail that is on the west side of the roadway. We would need to incorporate ramps or some other access to get the residents from the east across to that bike trail. But that would be a portion of that project too to increase the connectivity.
So we're not planning on our own sidewalk on our side. We're planning on connecting to Grimes' sidewalk.
For the time being, there is some existing terrain out there with with some deep ravines that would make it challenging. Not saying that we can't do it or can't look at it during the design of that, but the current project was just for an overlay with making a connection to the existing system that's out there.
Okay.
Next on the list is 100 Street, 70th to the north city limits or to the backside of Camp Dodge. This segment of road will likely require traffic study to determine what the road design will be on that, whether that's a three-lane or four-lane. It'll also need to take into account the expanding Crosshaven development and future connections to the Northwest Annexation area. We have had residents reach out inquiring about a trail connection from 70th to the Crosshaven neighborhood. This would be one feature that we would need to include in the design of the roadway and project as well. And this one will also create a little bit of difficulty from the terrain that's out there north of 70th too. But that one, we don't have any infrastructure for trail or sidewalk, so we'll have to incorporate one or the other in that road.
Is that included in these costs, Matt?
Yeah.
Okay.
Next on the project list is Northwest 100 Street Reconstruction. This is from Northwest 54th where we had our last intersection project with Urban Bill and Grimes up to Northwest 62nd Avenue. This runs in front of Horizon Elementary. This project is a joint project between Johnston and Grimes as well. It's roughly about 75/25% split. The project would reconstruct the current two-lane road segment into a four-lane divided urban road, which is really what you have on both ends of that project now. So it would just be a continuation of that. This project would also include or is planned to have a bike trail on the east side of the road and a portion of sidewalk that would be in the Johnston. In talking with Grimes, they have an undeveloped portion there that they don't want to put a sidewalk in just yet. They would put that in as it develops. And we're currently going through the 28E agreement to to get that cost share together. But later tonight, we do have on the agenda in the regular council work session to get the engineer on board, which is SEH, which did 54th Avenue for us. So that's moving forward too. With that, then we move into kind of the next six projects. Our subsequent phases of the East of Merle Hay Avenue, Northwest or north of 62nd Avenue. You've got that map will kind of show. Thank you. So Phase 1 is really 63rd Street. You scroll down to the bottom. Thank you. Is really 63rd there between 51st and Merle Hay Road. And then the next segments would be Section 2, which is 64th, which really runs the same thing between Merle Hay as well as 51st. And then you would get into segments 3, 4, 5 is 51st down to 62nd. So those would just be.
Is there a rationale for 3 and 4 being ahead of 5? Or how does that? How did you? How was that sort of determined?
We could do 5 in front of 3 and 4. We were just kind of laying out. And 1 and 2 will have the sanitary sewer trunk mains that run east-west that 3 and 4 connect into. I think when we were laying it out, we just.
Yeah, I just.
A systematic approach to it. We didn't.
I hate systematic approaches.
Matt. Kind of worked our way from west to east.
It appears we have more residential properties on 3 and 4 than 5. So we'd be hitting those those homes quicker if we did those.
Because 5 has really just got that little segment that doesn't have.
Yeah, you know. You have sanitary sewer on the on the Wilkie Place neighborhood as well as the neighborhood.
It's really on the east side. On the west side, you you have maybe a few residents. Okay.
The next project, the final project on the roadway segment of the CIP is the Northwest 54th Avenue Road Diet in front of Timber Ridge. Snyder and Associates have reviewed the area and provided recommendations for that intersection. Those recommendations is what the project amount is based on. Recommendations for the project include narrowing the roadway, adding raised medians to help improve stop sign visibility and reduce the amount of time that pedestrians are in the roadway as they cross Northwest 54th. With that, we were contacted by the the new cross guard there at Timber Ridge Elementary and he's excited about this project moving forward. So I think he he's keeping a log of of the folks that run the stop sign down there at Timber Ridge. He's provided that to me, so he's really looking forward to to this becoming a project. There are future unplanned road projects such as Towner Drive, Northwest 110th Street, and others that'll be covered in a in a future CIP work session. Are dates put on them yet? Moving into the sanitary sewer portion of our CIP, really the first five projects in the sanitary sewer coincide with the East of Merle Hay, North of 62nd Avenue projects. The cost of the sanitary sewer and those improvements were really broken out into their respective funding sources, which is why they show up on the CIP under sanitary sewer. The next would be the Northwest Area Sanitary Sewer. And really what you see there is segments B, C, and E, C, and A. These projects really are currently being designed. Segment A is currently being designed with the acceleration of Crosshaven Platte 9 and them getting ready to build houses. We did take that and break that into a smaller phase. We really broke that into two projects. With Phase 1A, we're going to order construction tonight on our regular council agenda. This will help us kind of fast-track that first segment and get out of their way. Otherwise, constructing that sanitary sewer really goes up to the backside of the new homes that would be constructed. So we're hoping for some good weather over the winter so that we can get the sewer constructed yet this winter, if not early spring, prior to them really getting the house house building going on that backside. Next, you'll see the bright area or bright drainage way. This project's really aligned with a stormwater project to help minimize the disturbance through that through that area. This project will allow for construction of a sanitary sewer trunk main that will serve areas south of 70th such as 93rd Street, 95th Street, and 98th Street, the Candle Ridge Development. There'll be future projects needed to really serve those streets, but this is the trunk main that would allow us to be able to have that ability to serve those areas. And then last on the list is our Orchard Meadows 1 Lift Station. Orchard Meadows is along the Beaver Drive corridor up near 85th Street. This project provides generator and control upgrades to a system that's 15 years in age. The main this is the main lift station that pumps the sanitary sewer waste along the Beaver Drive corridor from everything north of there. Project was recommended in our recent low-pressure sewer study that was performed two years ago. Project will provide greater redundancy in the low-pressure sewer system for us. Really add some extra ways for us to be able to power that lift station if it goes down. We do have a backup generator on it currently, but we've we've recently or not recently, in the last two years, have had some power issues up there. And it always seems to happen when our generator is experiencing mechanical failures. So we've got a way or this will help us be able to create a plug-in system that we can have a portable generator come up, plug into it, and be able to pump stuff, pump the waste down.
Matt, on those, is there ever consideration given to some sort of battery and renewable energy type of storage system for backup power? Solar or something along those lines?
Generally, we haven't looked at solar. I mean, you need you've got the head pressure between 85th Street all the way down to Merle Hay. Really takes some force to push that pressure. We could look into that. We haven't at this point. Generally, instead of like we've got diesel generators, sometimes we'll use.
Okay.
Generators have technology has gotten better, but even in our early stages, we weren't able to use those where we had high head pressure.
Sounds good.
Really jumping into the water portion of the CIP, you're going to see it's much like the sanitary sewer. The first six projects on the CIP coincide with the East of Merle Hay projects. The cost for the water with improvements were, like I said, broke out for the construction of of each segment there. Northwest Beaver Drive Pump Station Rehab. This pump station is the original one that was constructed in 1996 up at the standpipe that's right there at 78th and Beaver Drive. Pump station needs to be updated to provide and maintain pressure along the Northwest Beaver Drive corridor. Pump station project will provide much-needed redundancy in the in the water service to the corridor as well as help provide new technology to help increase efficiencies of that pumping system as well. This this does act as a backup to the new system that we currently put at Beaver Drive and 66th Avenue. That kind of helps push that pressure up Beaver Drive, but it also will help serve the Northwest Annex area. So if we're ever having issues or need a backup system, that's what this is meant to do. Next, you'll see there are the Northwest Area Annex Service for segments B, C, and D. These three projects are for the construction of segments B, C, and D. These are the water mains that would serve that Northwest Annexation area. These are currently programmed. We've got to review annually and adjust it accordingly as needed. Then we have a 16-inch transmission water main on Northwest 66. This kind of really coincides with that project that'll be pushed out a couple of years, but is in here for the construction cost for the funding source as well. One of the last ones is our updated comprehensive plan for our water system. This is a master plan. The previous master plan was it's approaching 10 to 12 years old. Many of the short-term and intermediate improvements have been made. So with that, like connections to the the Saylorville Water, which is another source, we were previously only pretty well single-sourced through Tenny Tower by Merle Hay Mall. We had a small connection on Beaver Drive, but this really gets us a new 30-inch main coming from Saylorville, so we've got some redundancy in our system. We've also got the new Beaver Drive pump station and we've installed some loops within our water main for that redundancy as well. Along with the addition of the Northwest Annex Area Update or Northwest Annex Area Update, Northwest Annex Area and update to the comprehensive plan needs to be performed, planned for future CIP projects with the growth of the city in that area as well. And really, the last one is Segment A of that water service to the Northwest Annex Area. And, you know, it's currently planned, but we currently on hold with the lawsuit that we're in. We just that one. Happy to answer any questions on that. I know I ran through that quickly.
Matt, I I know this is somewhat of a naive question, but are the are the years as these projects are broken out, are is there any kind of inflationary measure already factored in by year? Or are these present dollars that would be allocated or estimated for these?
Those are present dollars. We we take a look at that each year when we go through the process and we update those numbers on a manual.
Thank you.
Council, any other questions for Matt?
So Matt, on the back on the 100 Street Reconstruction, 54th to 62nd. So you've got $10 million in there. Is that the entire cost of the project or that's our 75% share?
That's the entire cost of the construction of the project. There's roughly about another $1 million in design, but that is the complete cost for the project that doesn't include our share that we got for our grant through the MPO.
And that is 75% is our cost?
Yeah, so we we roughly got about $750,000 through the STBG funding. So 75% of that, the way that we agreed with Grimes, 75% of that would go towards our portion of the project. The other 25% or their portion would go towards the project as well. It would be split between the two communities.
I guess what I'm saying is when I see $10 million, will we be getting like 2.5 million from Grimes? So that will reduce our cost to 7.5 million?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So that so that 10 million is well our our cost, the cost for that project will be a little less.
Correct. It's it's the full project. We're the lead agency, so we'll end up paying for the project and they'll reimburse us.
And the reason it's 75/25 is because when halfway between 54th and 62nd, it's Johnston on both sides.
Yeah, essentially where you see the the large cellular towers or the the large towers out there, that's Grimes' half of the road. So it's roughly split on linear footage. You go from 62nd to 54th, take that linear footage and then divide it.
That's right. So about halfway up the road, it becomes Johnston on both sides. Okay.
Correct.
And do we expect to be able to get any other additional MPO-type funding for the project, given that it's?
Not for not for that project.
Any other questions for Matt?
Mayor, I have one more question for Matt. The east of Merle Hay projects and their phases, do we take into account or do any of those costs take into account any of the connection fees that we will hopefully gather from residential areas that sign on or connect up?
No, those are those are purely construction dollars, what it'll take to construct a project, because we don't force folks to hook up for that connection. So if they've just put in a new septic system, we allow them to get the value of that septic system out. So we don't really know when those will come into play.
Sounds great. Thank you.
And Matt, I have just one other last one last question on that. So the project above at the 100 Street, 70th to city limits.
Yes.
Any contemplation to doing a trail? I've heard from folks who live in Crosshaven who would love to be able to have trail access to down to to 70th.
Yeah, that'll be that'll be one item that we'll take into consideration when we design that. There is some terrain issues.
That's a count.
Across with with the deep ravines and some of that. But yeah, we've heard from several residents or a few residents up that way too that they'd like to have a connection now that we have 70th Avenue, a trail down there. So that was one of the design aspects that we'll take.
Yeah, I would really like to encourage us to incorporate a trail into that.
Yeah, we probably won't. We probably won't be able to have trail and sidewalk on both sides. We'll probably just be able to have a trail on one side.
I I think that would be but that I think, you know, I think there's sort of an expectation now that there's trails and and Crosshaven is such a large neighborhood and they're a little isolated. It's pretty far north of 70th. And so I I would strongly encourage us to try to find a way to to be able to do that. But realize it is, I mean, it's a it's a Gerald just got ditches on both sides, so.
Yeah, it is a missing connector down to the to the rest of the trail system.
Great, excellent, thank you.
And Councilman Coe, one of our questions before you arrived was whether or not that those costs were already included in this number and they are.
Okay, great. Sorry, I apologize for doubling up there.
Any other questions? Okay, Matt, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
We have one other item on the agenda and that is just discuss the zoning and subdivision regulation code update, revisions to the zoning districts and division and tents. And Councilman Coe, before you arrived, we did say that we were going to try and finish the work session by 6:45 because we have guests out in the hallway for the Diwali
Oh, okay, cool.
Resolution that want to talk to us and, you know.
Show some more discipline than I normally show.
Right. Even.
Good evening. Wanted to provide you an update on our zoning code update process. As councilors aware, we're going to be chipping away every month. The Planning and Zoning Commission is scheduled to sort of tackle pieces of this and I wanted to just give you a a brief update of sort of the discussion they had last week just to keep you apprised. And if you have questions or further direction, I'd be happy to to take that tonight. So the first sort of big piece that we tackled were our zoning districts. And so we've been doing an analysis of where are they applied? How are they applied? Is there duplication? Is there things that need to change? And so I'll start here with the residential districts. A couple of districts are proposed to be eliminated. Our R1150 is very lightly used and actually dates back. Originally was an A1 district 20 or 15 or 20 years ago. Was converted to this R1150, just really isn't getting used. And so we believe that district can get eliminated. Similarly, the R190 and the 60, 75, 90, 100, 150 all regulate or all get down to what the minimum lot width is in the districts. That's how the naming convention works. The R190 is very close and setbacks and other things to the R175. Again, it's only used in like two places, maybe in the entire community. They're developed and we believe that those can be that district can be eliminated to the R175. In addition, one of the things that we're looking to do with the with the changes is actually rename the districts. So there's a little bit more clarification. So the R1100, for example, would be the large lot residential district. The R175 would be the medium lot residential district. R1160 would be the the small lot residential district. So essentially, we'd end up with three primary, single-family districts or RE residential estate, which is our large, large lot district. Any questions on that? Otherwise, we'll bounce past that to the next. Yeah, that table that was. I'm not going to spend time tonight. Included in the information are actual written intents for each of the districts right now, which sort of helps define why we use the district or where we might use the district. Right now, we only have one for all residential districts. There's one intent. And so with this change, we'd have an intent for each one. They're included there. I'm not going to go through them at length tonight. But continuing through the additional residential districts, we have an R1A district, which is an R1 district primarily in the area east of Merle Hay Road, kind of behind in the 55th, 57th area, would would originally used to allow animal keeping. But we also have an animal keeping overlay district that works really well that we apply over the top of a standard zoning district. And so we only have a handful of folks that are still under this district. Even less of those have animal keeping or the, you know, the size or space left to do animal keeping. And so the proposal here would be to eliminate that district. We rezone those to the appropriate R1 district, either R175 or R1100, and then apply the animal keeping overlay where necessary, so they'd still have that ability for animal keeping.
Dave, when you do the
Go back there for a second.
The animal keeping overlay, is that does that show up like on our zoning district map? Or how if you're a citizen and you want to be able to know, is there animal keeping allowed in this? How do you?
Yeah, it's an overlay on the map where it's just like a hatch. So you can see the underlying district and you can see the new district or the secondary overlay district. A couple of other changes here. R2, R3, R4, kind of going along with the same lines of the R districts where we are working on the naming of these to low-density mixed residential, medium-density mixed residential, and high-density mixed residential, which kind of mirrors how we've defined things in the comprehensive plan as well. And if you want to skip.
Just Dave, one question on this. So R4 currently goes up to what level of density?
Currently goes up to 16 units maker.
And and that would be continued into this?
That's that's the discussion for next month. So what we what we what we wanted to do is figure out what districts we were going to have. And then the next step is the use table table, which I'll touch on briefly tonight. And then we'll get into the bulk regulations, densities, setbacks, all of those types of things. So we're we are expecting some changes in all of those things kind of for all these districts, sort of where that might shake out. I don't I don't know that we have a sense of that yet, but that's part of the discussion.
And I actually we exchanged emails a little bit. I, you know, I had we had this the Woda Cooper project a month or so ago that that was a higher density than was allowed under R4. And so we had to kind of use a little bit of bootstrapping by doing the mixed use. So I I not wasn't real happy. So I wasn't real happy with that outcome in some ways, because it's, because if you're a resident and you look at it, there's no mixed-use element to the property. And so I think it's kind of confusing. So I'd like for us to think through if we, for those types of situations in which we have a project that's got a higher density than allowed in R4, some way to manage that a little bit better. And I'm not sure exactly what that solution is, but just kind of wanted to, this might be the opportunity to think about that.
That's, it's on our list to look at. If you want to scroll to the next table, I think it's two pages. Now we get into, those are our residential districts. Getting into our non-residential districts. A couple of things to highlight here. We have C3 is what's considered highway service commercial. We're suggesting change that to regional. We look at the, we have neighborhood, we have community, and regional just fits better. We also don't have a lot of highway necessarily oriented development. And then we have two districts, CO, Commercial Office, and PC, Professional Commerce Park, which aside from bulk regulations setbacks are virtually identical in what they allow for uses. And there's just, there's no rhyme or reason where they've been used or why they've been used. And so we're proposing to consolidate those into a shared district. Here, it's called Commercial Employment District. Commission didn't really love that. And so we're looking at some different options for what we might call that. But that's really kind of focused on that employment-based, largely office, maybe some light support retail, but not necessarily, you know, in a retail type of use. And so that, those two districts are proposed to be combined into that new district. And then. Other couple of changes. We have IC District is sort of the step. It's kind of in our light, very, very light industrial district today. Again, this one hasn't gotten used a lot. We seem to tend to focus on our light industrial or M1 or M2. IC also has some limitations on sort of how much percentage of a building can be warehouse. And so we've had that question, a lot of sort of the the office warehouse tech flex-type buildings have been pretty popular. The Birchwood Building is that way, for example. And so we're, the thought is we would reimagine this IC District to, again, the commission wasn't all that excited about calling it Employment Flex. So we're working on naming of that. But it kind of, this would be that district where we'd have the ability to do more warehousing, more manufacturing, light warehousing, but still have a little higher standards for architecture and other things than we would in the M1 district. So we really see this as a great opportunity as we look out along 141 and the business park areas out there. Again, focused on employment, but having the flexibility and interior use of the building to do warehousing and light manufacturing, those kind of things. Mixed use center is currently just applied along Merle Hay Road. And there's, under it, there's three subcategories, ROC, ROC1 and ROC2. As we look at the comp plan, we really want to apply mixed use districts beyond that. And we have in a few, and Councilman Coop mentioned one, we have in a few cases done. But primarily, the mixed use center was designed for Merle Hay Road corridor. What we'd like to do is make that, make these citywide districts that we can apply. And the comp plan envisioned sort of two levels, a neighborhood mixed use, which is largely residential, but has a commercial component to it, and community mixed use, which is primarily commercial, but would have some residential. And most of that, we're discussing a lot of how, what's the right mix? And how do you require the mix in both of these? And we're not there yet. We're working on that. But that community mixed use would, you know, that residential would likely be like second or third story. So you're getting a vertical integration where the neighborhood mixed use might be more of a horizontal. So more to come on those, but we are proposing two districts there. That would be consistent with the comp plan. No changes proposed for sort of the other sort of districts. AR, Conservation District or Government Facility District, which is Camp Dodge. There might be, we might make some changes to the districts, but certainly not any changes necessary for the sort of using the districts or what they're called. We touched a little bit on overlay districts. A couple of changes noted here. The Merle Hay Road corridor overlay district, we virtually applied the things that are in that district throughout the rest of our other code ordinance and other requirements. So there's really no need to continue this. There's, we're doing what was originally put in this overlay district. We've already applied it to all the other codes. So we are proposing a small change just to the designation for the animal keeping from A to AK. So it's clear that it's animal keeping, not agriculture. We have a very old cluster overlay zoning district in our ordinance that we've never used, isn't really applicable in looking at it. So we are proposing to eliminate that.
What was, what was that?
The intent was that it could, it could work in something like Crosshaven Development, where we had smaller lots, smaller setbacks, but then you have, you know, more reserved open space. And we looked at it when that project was proposed, and it didn't, it just didn't fit. This came out of a previous comp plan, as we really want to encourage this type of development. We've, now we've seen that type of development, but the district as it was written just didn't work. So proposing to eliminate it. I think that's all of the, if you want to stop right there, you're perfect. Thanks, Cindy. We get into housing types. One of the things that we're leading up to and why we've done this more detailed breakdown, our current use table, you know, where we look to find a bunch of uses and sort of what the bulk requirements are, or where they might be allowed in and what district. There isn't a lot of specificity in the types of particularly housing types. And so what we've tried to do here is be very defined in various housing types. And then that will enable us as we look at standards, use standards, for where these would be applied and what bulk requirements. And so we might have, for example, in one zoning district, we might allow a single-family, a dwelling, single unit, or a dwelling, two-unit duplex in that same district. But we might have different standards for each of them. So they might both be allowed, but the one might be allowed with, only under these circumstances or these requirements. And so that's why we've put more definition to this. So some of these, we struggle a little bit on naming. All of them start with dwelling comma. So when you look in definitions, they're all together. Dwelling two-unit, single-family, I think is pretty straightforward. Dwelling two-unit is.
Dave, when it says possible ADU, that's the ability to do this duplex?
ADU would be an accessory dwelling unit, like a mother-in-law cottage or.
Okay, okay, that's what it was.
Something like that.
So that's what ADU stands for?
Yep.
Okay. And those are allowed today?
They are under, with a special use permit. Yep. In certain districts. Dwelling two-unit as a duplex. So this would be where you'd have a, what I would consider a traditional duplex, where you have one lot, one owner and two units. Most likely, you know, maybe the owner lives in one side, rents the other, or they're both renters. But there's only one lot. If you want to scroll to the next page, Cindy. In contrast, what we're defining dwelling attached two-unit as a twin home, that would be where they would be, there would actually be individual lots under each unit. So you have two units in the building, you know, in the attached building. But each building or each unit has their own lot and own ownership. And then we look at dwelling three or four unit as a triplex or a quadriplex. Again, this would all be on one lot. So you might have a row house where you have three units all on one lot. Go ahead and scroll down. Thank you. And then dwelling small townhouse, three or four units per building. Again, a townhouse, under that definition, that you would have one unit per lot. So in the three or four, you'd have three or four units in an attached building. Each building would have their, each unit would have their own lot. And then we keep moving up to large townhouse, where you have five or eight units in a building, again, on their own lot. And then we get into the apartments where you have two categories, a small apartment with five to 12 units and a large apartment with 13 units. And that would be in the building itself, not necessarily in the development. And again, we're providing, we don't have, you know, right now, we have like apartments, townhouse, by attached and single-family. That's our list of categories. And so by expanding these categories and these housing types will allow us to better regulate where and under what conditions they would be allowed. And that gets us to, this is sort of a precursor to what we're looking at really in depth next month. But that gets us to this use table where we define, and this is just looking at residential. So we don't have this built out for the rest of the districts yet. But this, using those housing types and using the refined zoning districts that I went through for residential, the P would stand for uses that are permitted. The SPR would stand for uses that are allowed, but with a special, or with a subplan review, which means you have to come to the Planning and Zoning Commission, the council, to get approval. I will tell you, in our current table, we have a number of things where certain things are allowed, but only by the granting of a special use permit, which goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission for recommendation, but then go to the Board of Adjustment for approval. And in those cases, we don't have very good criteria for what may or may not justify that approval. And we're asking the Board of Adjustment, who tends to mostly deal with variances and special exceptions, to make a land use decision. And so we've sort of directed our consultant to look, how do we make this table with as few or none of those special use requirements or special use permit? So that those decisions are coming to the council. Land decisions come to the council versus the Board of Adjustment. When you look broader, we also have a special use permit chapter with things like cell towers, you know, energy substations, where they could end up basically in any district under a special use permit. We'll probably maintain that and think we'll need to maintain that. But when we look at our standard residential districts, our hope is we clearly define what is or isn't allowed through the normal zoning and site plan process versus the special use process. If you want to scroll back up, I want to just touch on a couple of those. So what this kind of shows you is as you, as we work up into the densities, we start allowing the higher density things with some overlap in some of the districts. And again, by defining each of these housing types, we're able to, if necessary, in the R1-75, for example, we're saying by site plan review, you can have a duplex or a twin home. There would be very specific requirements developed that would be different than the standard R1-75 bulk requirements there. So that's what we're working on next, is sort of that next step, finishing out this table and figuring out what those distinctions are. And there may need to be tweaks to this. This was just sort of the first attempt as we put it together. But at that point, I'm going to stop. There's more information in the packet I don't think we need to necessarily dive into tonight. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Council have any quick questions for Dave this evening?
Heard anything tonight you really did like, please let me know so we can incorporate that as we continue moving forward.
David, I think you've done a quite a good job on this, you and the Planning and Zoning Commission. I was in a meeting last week. That was really good discussion on that.
Do that in 15 minutes. That was a very long, much longer conversation. Yeah, their commission's been great. They roll up their sleeves and they're really ready to dive in on this, so.
That's great. Well, we've got some great members on there, so. Okay, well, thank you, David.
Thank you.
And I did see some of our guests out in the hallway earlier. So is there anything else that, it is 6:44. We have one more minute before we are self-imposed deadline this evening. Jim?
There's a couple items I was going to cover under staff comments at the end of the council meeting, but I'll go ahead and talk about them now. First of all, Teresa and I attended a meeting last week with the city managers at the Airport Authority. And the airport's working on their terminal project and are going to make a request of all the communities to participate in funding part of the new terminal project. And we're anticipating probably in the next couple of days getting what they are going to ask from the city of Johnston and all communities. We don't have that information directly at this point, but we know they're going to make a request. They're trying to get some funding through the state of Iowa, and part of that is contingent on having the local community support the airport as well. So we'll certainly share that information when it becomes available, but we anticipate to get that here pretty soon. So just wanted to give you a heads up. You might start hearing about that as the press picks up on that issue. Also wanted to note, the Water Works Board met last week, and we had let you know that the committee to the board had indicated that they weren't going to have an increase on the cost for Johnson to purchase water. The board did take action last week. And so for 2022, the city of Johnston will not have an increase for the cost that we purchased water from Des Moines Water Works, which is a good thing for us. I think most of the other ratepayers are going to have an increase, but the city of Johnston will not because of the category that we're in for their ratepayers. You did get some information regarding the senior citizens meeting that we're going to have on November 16th at five, from five to seven in this room. That's going to be an opportunity to hear from our senior community about what they want to see the senior program look like going into the future. We've engaged Tamara Kenworthy, who does our strategic planning for the city council, to facilitate that process. I have reached out to some of the leadership within the senior community, and they're very excited about having this opportunity to express, you know, what they would like to see their program go towards. And then the follow-up to that would be the city council will need to reestablish the senior advisory board, which is a city council appointment. But the good news with that is that as we reestablish that, we will have a very well-thought-out number of goals and activities that we want the board to consider, that is going to be created by the group that they represent. So anyway, hopefully you can attend that meeting. There will be a Zoom alternative to that meeting as well. If you aren't able to attend in person, you can certainly participate by Zoom. And then the last thing I just wanted to mention this evening was we do have some visitors from Kosovo that are going to be in Johnston tomorrow. There, it's a delegation of four individuals that is the local government representatives or the, what is it, the minister, thank you, the Minister of Local Government in Kosovo. And so four individuals are going to come and meet with the mayor and I. We're going to talk a little bit about the city. The cool thing is we're going to be able to show them an American election while they're here. We were going to take them through the polling place. And then we're also going to tour the high school. We're going to tour the library and then the public safety building. So we have about three and a half hours with the group, which includes lunch as well, so.
It'll be a whirlwind.
Yeah, we'll be moving pretty quickly, but I don't think we've met with the Minister of Local Governments before. So this will be an interesting information and dialogue with that group. That's all I had for this evening.
Okay, well, do you or Suresh want to tell us about the guests that we have out in the hallway? What we can expect?
Do you want me to go up then talk to them?
No, 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 just so that when the council walks out there, they know what to expect when they. Okay, can you give us a preview?
Oh, you want me to give you a review of that?
Preview of it, yeah.
Preview of this, okay, sorry. I was thinking something else. Sure. Diwali is a.
Let's adjourn the work session now.
It's closed, right? Work session is closed, okay. So Diwali is a festival celebrated by a most.